I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did Jeff say who was gonna have some new jokes first?
I saw Jeff and Wendy walking yesterday, I think. And he reminded me, he said, "Seven o'clock tomorrow," and I said, "Yep." And I said, "Okay, Mayor Lisa wants some new jokes, so no voting out of jokes."
I was gonna just repeat them along with them, like at a concert, you know, sing along.
Alright, Jesse, roll call.
Brugman.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Peterson.
Bishop.
Here.
Thank you very much. Call us to order at 7:00 PM. The Open Meeting Act is on the south wall for reading enjoyment. There is a copy of the City Council packet in the council chambers. And it is on the counter by the coffee maker, which has no coffee in it. Please leave the binder or return the binder to the counter per the Open Meeting Act. The City of Grant already did that one. The mayor and the city reserve the right to enter into closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, even though the closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up the items on the agenda in the order presented. However, the mayor and the council reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate schedules. The City of Grant further reserve the right to adjust the order of the items of this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals per topic. Please come to the podium and state the name for the record and the agenda item you wish to speak up to. Alrighty, everyone get a chance to review the agenda? Yes. I move to accept the May 28, 2024 proposed agenda.
Second.
Andrew moves, Sam, second, that we accept the May 28, 2024 proposed agenda. Any discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew? Motion carried. Review and action of prior meeting minutes from May 14, 2024.
I'm going to accept action prior meeting minutes of May 14, 2024 and wait the reading.
Second. Sam moved, Andrea second, to accept the prior meeting minutes from May 14, 2024 and wait the reading. Any discussion? Andrea?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm sorry, I'm staying, I'm staying, I'm staying.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, I was not.
I also vote yes.
I read them, but I was not.
Motion carried.
Just to clarify, Kim, you're standing for the minutes and you say you're voting yes?
Yes. Thank you for yes. Keeping us on the straightener. Communications.
Alright, short and sweet as we're getting into the summer season here. The heat's gonna get turned up, hopefully the rain stick it doesn't get turned off, we need that hopefully to keep going. Swimming pools in full swing, ball season started tonight. First games tonight. Tana did say she would be here in a little bit, so either they're getting slaughtered or things are just ending early, so I did not expect that, so she'll be here shortly. Still working on a few projects at the ball fields. We have our new hire, working out well. We'll start his training on CDO classes with the gentleman of Sydney. Kurt Tremaine is gonna be doing, he's a third-party tester for that, so we don't if you recall, the last time we did this, the online was not an option yet, so we had to send a college that's gonna walk around S U S D. So we'll be taking, he'll be taking the online courses here in the office and getting that taken care of, but all good things there. Third Street from Garfield to Sherman. Garfield to Sherman is now open. That project is complete, I think we have the final billing and the bills and claims. So, project went well. Had to have a little crest rock in a few places where the soil was a little bit too wet. Not a problem there, they know what to do, so everything went smoothly with that project. Appreciate CSC for the work that they do. Yeah, other than that, we've got some upcoming meetings. I will be gone on the 5th of June for MEAN. And then that takes us to Cemetery on June 11th at 5:15 PM in this room. And our next city council meeting, that same evening at 7:00. And I might mention, I'm sure hopefully all of you got the calendar reminder, but the joint special meeting with the library is June 18th at 6:00 PM, so, and that will be here as well. And we'll have that noted in the agenda soon as Tana gets us to the wording for the agenda items for that meeting, so.
Perfect, thank you very much. Standing committee reports, Andrea.
None.
Kimberly?
The Planning and Zoning Committee met today discussing the bishop property plot and how that layout will work. They had some good contribution from members present in the audience.
Just gave them the big map so we can show them what the
Well, they're bringing it to us, right?
Yeah, I have already.
Oh, okay, yeah, so our next meeting will be what I was about to bring to us, right? Oh, there's that. And that was it? That was probably here for that. Very good. I think we're still a screen working out.
Do you want, is there any other variants?
Yeah, we'll have to have two and they have another one. So, yeah.
Was there any issues and concerns?
A good one was raised up for a couple of reasons, discussing like the property ending there at 8th Street and really there was no access planned, the whole freeway internet development was gonna be before. And there was some concern about like emergency vehicles being able to enter from multiple locations just in case. And maybe, and a plan for services provided and all of that, so that'll be the adjustment, yeah.
So the adjustment that they made today that will not affect moving forward with the preliminary plating for the final plating was along here. Coming off of 8th, the south side of 8th, they're gonna add a 30-foot access easement. They probably already explained while I was gone for emergency vehicles and utilities. If great planes has to get back there with their trencher or their truck, you know, something like that, so.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Who brought that up originally?
On behalf of the fire chief, so.
From multiple directions, from a CRA perspective and from because he was also thinking about any future development needing to access anything with the mayor or
From a budding, a budding landlord.
Alright, that's a really good, that was really good. Yeah. I was just watching and listening, but Jason Bishop was also there, obviously, after committing a ownership of the property and kind of the way that that can cause any issues there, yeah, so.
And the way of so the way Ryan, Brad Dickinson, our surveyor for this project, who's a really only state-certified local surveyor in the area. It's, it's, we still, still CRA of property, but for the purposes of this subdivision, the entire subdivision will be called Bishop subdivision. We'll have one legal for the subdivision, but we still property, we still have covenant, pricing, all that, and we can do our own property, so. But to simplify it in the courthouse, we said this was the best route, we have two filings.
Right.
You have two sets, you have another. We can do both public hearings on both fronts, so. Both parties agree this was the best best route to get along with Tom once that serving.
All a good experience.
Anybody like to see him post? This unfortunate.
Don't steal. Or steal your money.
And reminding was the potential for another thousand duplex?
We have 14 single-family units. Four duplex-sized units, actually those could be quadplexes as well. Don't know if you could fit a six-plex on there with a single car garage. You could probably fit a six-plex without a single car garage. And then on the bishops, I think it's 14 as well. Sorry, it's in phase one.
Okay.
Phase two, the east on those east lots along south is are not complete. Just along the street. So they hit it for a bit, we got that far enough, so.
It is, it's this right here, actually, this access to come back in here, so this did not exist prior, if we would've just did it and stopped and then the only way back in here would've been
It's just gonna follow the 30-foot line north
Yeah.
Of here.
Well, this opens, yeah, so this opens right here?
Yeah, this is 8th Street.
Yeah.
And then it turns, 30-foot, and then 30-foot.
That'll be it. Okay, good. Yeah. Hopefully never had any issues, but he had some good examples of out in the blah blah after the tornado and some places that were really vulnerable and only and it was a mess, so.
Right. Yeah, so debris all over the place.
Yeah. Yeah, you just never know how things are gonna happen or where, so.
Accident or fire.
So that will bring the, June 11th, we'll have a public hearing for your approval on the preliminary plating. And then go back to the planning commission for final plating. They'll have a public hearing, that one requires notification to the budding landowners. And then come back to you again for the final plating for another public hearing, so one of three public hearings to go.
Do we get, also, we have all the images, like you had
Yeah.
Kind of plating and electric and all that stuff, okay.
June 11th meeting, you'll have the same packet that I presented them
Okay.
With the changes to the 30-foot.
That'll be good. Very good.
Thank you.
Cheerleading is here, and Sam. Financials, Jesse?
I don't think there was anything that really, I felt like stood out crazy. It, this one of course shows the up part of the new CD and the
Alright, thank you. Please note that we accept them as presented. Any public comment today? Alright, there'll be no unfinished business, we will move to new business. Action and discussion on presentation by hometown agency. Welcome, Mr. Jeff.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Did we win?
It's 3rd inning, so.
30, oh, you left early, okay. We had an hand, huh?
Six to nine.
There you go, alright. Excellent.
I don't know how you should feel about that, they were playing.
There's winners and losers, they both, they all win. Here is the handouts that we have available, this is the Cliff Notes version. And here is one. And don't worry, we're only taking notes, I'll be riveting presentation. You can jump in at any time. So oh, how to start? I don't know.
Remember what I told you yesterday about jokes?
Yeah, but where to start at, I wish, I wish you could start out with a ha-ha fun, fun joke. Let's, you brought up a great point, you talk about emergency access. Tornadoes, right, situations like that have been plaguing Nebraska and surrounding areas as you can kind of see on the news and stuff like that. In our packet, we'll go through all of the renewal materials there on the right and then on the left, there'll be little highlights of what I will be referring to. And then of course, the sheet that Tana already is looking at is the, is the price sheet. So if you want to jump ahead and write to that, that's where that's at. But and you look at the, at the overall price, you're going, well, that's not a, I know, it sounds bad, so I'm not gonna run the check, but it's not a huge increase. Well, that's because there's gonna be contingents with the offer. And the contingents are, you guys accept more risk. And that's becoming, I'm sure if you have looked at your renewal, your escrow account and things like that, insurance premiums are skyrocketing. And the only way to really control them is one of two ways, really, is to accept some conditions and increase your risk. And that's the same both of them here. EMC had 108 loss ratio last year, company-wide, what does that mean? Well, 100 is, is not good, that's, that's every dollar that came in, every dollar went out. And that's not counting administrative and things like that, that's strictly, that's just strictly claims loss ratio. So when they have 108, they're gonna readjust. And they have, they've had that situation, that's all insurance carriers right now are sustaining that, so. There's different restrictions out there and things like that, but we're gonna jump in all of this. I've got three hours allocated on my time, so
Thank you.
So we'll jump right into that. On the right, this, this thing right here is where we'll jump in. And by the way, that, that very next page just has a breakdown of everything that we're going to cover tonight. Property, liability, you'll see there's already multiple versions because when this thing got sent to me on May 10th, after I met with Ed probably two weeks before that, we made some adjustments and then the adjustments came back and I made some more adjustments. Some things to try to get, try to get us to where we need to be. And then, so that's our estimated, premium estimate at this time. I'm gonna go through the next page, jump right into commercial property, and folks, this is where it's all at. I mean, just, I mean, so we're gonna head on to start with and we'll jump right into that. And everything that we have is on a blanket basis, okay? So that's something else that's kind of, we have some, and if you'll turn to the very next page, it helps us out. There's some property in the open, there's some building, there is, there's things like that, and we have actual cash value and we have replacement costs. And that's the two different types of how settlements happen in the insurance world. And I'm gonna break down, we have actually two different blankets of properties. And a lot of our buildings, like this one sitting right here, is insured at $1.7 million. And this, of course, goes into the fire department, because the fire department only has the two bays over there for, and that goes all the way to the back, for the grants for the fire dish where the ambulance actually sit. It's kind of an ironic thing. The fire department sits on your property and the county sits on the fire department's property and we all get along with that. So that's, that's the main thing from that standpoint. Just a, just a quick educational purposes. There is five trends impacting commercial property insurance. I put these in here to let you guys know what those are, to help illustrate those things. The big one is the cost of fixing things. Inflation is another word for that. We are last to the party. And what I mean by that is we price things based on what they, they were supposed to be at that time. Inflation hits and you'll see, you'll see the markup. And doing any type of home remodel right now and then compare that to 10 years ago, what the cost of those were. They went up a little bit. And so, just to give you guys an education here on where you were at, in 2021, which is on the premium sheet, the renewal term from 2021 to 2022, the valuation of all of the city's properties was $6.5 million, okay? Our renewal this year is $11.11 million. So we almost doubled our property valuation. Of course, we had this swimming pool and some other things like that have increased, increased. I'm not picking on it in general, I'm just saying the different contributors. Last year, we were just over $10 million, the year before that, we were at $8.5. So as you look at the property sheet going up, so are the things that we're insuring, and so is the cost of them. Natural disasters, I mean, all those types of things, but the big one is increased costs across the board and then reinsurance companies. Insurance companies buy insurance from other insurance companies. And the way that this is usually done is, is that you cover your risk here and then they pass it on to a reinsurer, so when a big event happens, a lot of times, the primary insurance company on it has a stock loss of so many millions or billions of dollars, how much they can, they can handle, and then that's transferred to reinsurance companies. Reinsurance companies have been hit in the last couple of years at an astronomical rate. Meaning that the occurrences happened and they're transferring that on. So they come in and then they crank premiums, is what ends up happening basically to offset that. So that trickles down to whom? In this situation, the City of Grant is a consumer. All of you are feeling this right now. Like I said, I go back to the escrow little example that I used. A lot of people's homeowners' insurance are all going up or their deductibles are going up or stuff like that to offset it. So I'm gonna sound like a broken record here, because that's the part that's broke. And it's on repeat right now, so. A couple different things that they've done, they've attached a couple, and that's these other two things behind on the left side. This is where they start transferring some of the risk back to the city. And some of those risks are a reduction in coverage from the standpoint of cosmetic loss due to roof surfaces caused by wind or hail. And what we're talking about here, and the best thing that I can do an example of this is, I'm gonna pick on a golf course, seems like I'm picking on it all the time. Out there, when the roof got beat up out there, it wouldn't even matter if this was in there because it was big enough hail that it damaged the actual structure itself to the point where it was going to leak. Does that make sense? So the roof was compromised. So therefore, they would've had to pay on it anyway. But this goes back to if it just peppers it up and it looks bad and it doesn't compromise the structure, they're not going to pay for that now. Does that make sense? Talk to any one of your farmers around in the area and ask them what's happened to their metal buildings the last couple of years, exactly what we're talking about here. Insurance companies came out way back 10 or 15 years ago and they covered cosmetic loss. Now they don't on metal. Metals right now is one thing, that's the one downside to it. The other downside is that if the roof has not been replaced or updated in the past 15 years, they would've put an actual cash value rider on us. This doesn't affect us at the City of Grant as much as it would maybe some other situation, here's why. A lot of our, a lot of our buildings that were old, that are older, have ACV riders on them already. That's, that's how their valuation is. If we've updated the roof though, i.e. done improvements on the roof, I know we did live, but we've gotta get some information down, that's where I'm gonna be picking on her because we gotta get some information on some of these roofs that we have replaced due to wear and tear. I mean, just over time, that we have replaced not due to an actual occurrence coming into play. But I'm gonna pick on like our our swimming pool's not gonna be affected by this, does that make sense? Because it's not 15 years old. So like you said, really our concessions here, we were making some of these concessions already on some of the ACV buildings. What actually makes up our, and then the last hammer that I haven't dropped yet. This is, this is the bad one. Last year, we had $2,500 all other perils deductible, so the broken pipe in the wall, we were out the first $2,500 bucks. That is now $5,000. Wind and hail stayed at $10,000. Here's the other shoe that dropped, it's per location, not per occurrence. So cut in for a minute. It's per location, not per occurrence, so how does this adversely affect the city? This building, library, and the one downstairs all get beat up at the same time, 10, 10, and 10. Okay? Golf course got beat up out there, doesn't matter, it's all by itself, does that make sense? That location gets beat up, it's $10,000, we're out the first $10,000. That's the other concession, and the premium's still up. That's where we're at.
Is the location or physical address?
It's by location, yes. That's why we have the situation. City Park is all one location, does that make sense? Because they use that all the same, even though it takes up a whole city block. Cemetery is its own location. This is its own location. There's nine different locations, and they actually have separated it out, does that make sense? And so that's where, that's where the difference is on those types of situations. Museum, this way, and the library, and this is all three different locations. The sweeping hailstorm could be a problem.
Then, I'll tell you that, you know, we had some repairs done to this roof, so I'm gonna go ahead and build this nestment. This roof alone is $76,000 to replace from Weathercraft for the EPDM roof or whatever. So if we have three locations and you can figure the same, similar price value, yes, $30,000 is a lot, but it's gonna be $210,000 total for all three locations to replace, so.
And that's the same square foot, good point. And let's take that step even farther, five years ago, it's at least 10% less, maybe 20% less. If you go 10 years ago, and it's half as much. Turned close, I mean, that's where we're at. And not just that, the masonry work, anything that happens anymore. It's nothing for a broken pipe now in a house. We got $20,000 just to, I mean, the mediate, the people come in, mediation, well, that's not it.
Mediation.
There you go. That roof is right there, I mean, for them to roll over, it's 10, 10 grand, is what I see there, sir, portion, that's not to rebuild the situation, so. I mean, that's, that's where we're at now, that same situation's half as much 10 years ago. And your premiums are half as much 10 years ago also, likewise. Now, also, because your insurance amounts to fix those now have been, we are the last two to drop, so. It actually gets better after that? That is really the sticker right now on our actual presentation. That is, that is the big part. Couple different things, just to give you an idea. The bathhouse, for example, is one of our blankets, you know, that you start looking at here. Like, that's a building, the substation is property in the open. So let's talk about your coverage here for a minute, the substation's $2 million. Is the valuation to replace the substation up on the hill over here, it's the Midwest that we insure. We increased that just a couple of years ago, it was $1.2 million, now it's $2 million. It's our case and mission to replace it, and we're probably still a little shy. So let's say, let's say tornado takes that or severe situation happens to just that piece of property. Wind and hail, fire, if it's a fire loss, it's only, it's only five grand, out of our pocket. But let's say that it costs $2.4 million to replace. Because we blanketed our coverage, does that make sense? We're blanketing it? We have coverage for up to $2.09 million for property in the open and replacement cost, does that make sense? So that's one thing that, we're not doing it with a cap at this location, does that make sense? If something does happen. Now, the whole thing gets leveled, and you gotta keep in mind, I'm talking about this getting leveled in town and the airport and the cemetery, and, I mean, you got locations, it can happen. I'm not gonna say it can't. We got up to over $11 million worth of coverage, start putting things back. That's gonna go really fast. But that's what we do have. At that airport out there, folks, we got $2 million worth of property just sitting out there. That's not counting the things that are inside of it, things like that, I mean, those are situations where when we built the things out there, 400,000, 500,000, 600, we had, we had, you know, 1.5 million. That thing is well more than that now, just because of the valuation. And that was in 2014 and 2017, we did those. That was what I did look at. Questions? Okay. Moving along, it just makes better. I don't have a joke for that, that's just bad. Moving along, the general liability Uh, moving along, the uh, general liability, um, million dollars per occurrence. We have a two million dollar pool of money, uh, six point, uh, six point. June second to June second is our policy term. So if we have a million dollar claim tonight, right? Something happens and we're negligent, and we, it it goes on, it would be attached to this date. Does that make sense? June second, we reset that two million dollar pool of money. Okay? Um, how do they, how do they uh, how do they price City of Grant? Well, it's by the functions that you do, as the crowd roars. Uh, the the functions that you do. So we have a couple of things in here. We have a swimming pool, right? We go off of gross sales, right? This is the type of things that we meet about. Uh, the golf course, we have one, right? We don't have gross sales of that because our gross sales is dollar, right? That's what our gross sales is. Quick question. I always get asked this, uh, liquor liability exposure, right? Somebody gets over served and there's an accident. In the state of Nebraska, technically, there's a draft act, throw it away, the state lawsuit still happens. City of Grant takes a host liquor liability stance, okay? We have coverage for host liquor liabilities, so we will cover if we drug into that lawsuit. They are the primary, though, they have liquor liabilities, but they're the ones who are actually selling the alcohol. Does that make sense? Does everybody understand that? Right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Uh, we do have some other scheduled events that we have, that we have coverage for. We accept all responsibility. If things go haywire, when the county runs their fair, great, though. We understand that, right? Here's why. Because the the uh, the state folks don't want anything to do with that. In fact, we have waved them off. Otherwise, they won't, I mean, we'd have to wave them off and accept responsibility if something happens. Department of Roads in Nebraska. Because you're blocking a highway. If we weren't blocking a highway, we wouldn't have to worry about that. We block a highway, we we take sole, we take, for those days that we're doing that, we take sole possession of anything that should go wrong. They still have to prove that we're negligent, sometimes. Does that make sense? I say, still gotta go through these guys to make sure it happens. Um, those are kinda how, that's how a town liability, that's funny, funny fact. Town liability ratings goes from one thousand and one person all the way up to twenty-five hundred, they put y'all in the same pool now. Of rating. So it is twenty-five hundred eighty-eight dollars. That's up to your eight, thirty, eight hundred dollars. Another five hundred, swimming pool's three hundred fifty-one. These are things that we put together with Jesse. So when you guys get audited, one of the things they break it down by, how much does garbage cost? How much does water cost? How much does uh, wrecking, parking wreck cost? We, we, I said me. Candy and Jesse get together and put these numbers together so that they feel like you're on it. Let's not talk about Jeff doing that, because Jeff's, you don't want Jeff doing that. So the next coverage is something that's fairly newer. It's the cyber, if you flip over the pages, the cyber uh, coverage is the next two pages. The rate on this is going up. Why do you think that is? Because there's been more claims. We don't have a lot of coverage here. If you look down, the one thing that you always, that you always hear about on the news is extortion, right? They capture somebody's stuff and they hold these big Fortune five hundred companies hostage. We have a whole whopping twenty-five grand to put towards that. Um, those types of things, though, if there's a cyber suit, some of the other things that land into that, we have a little bit of coverage, we don't have a lot. When this thing came out, it was twelve hundred dollars to do. If you look at the next page, it's already fourteen hundred eighty-five dollars. And that's what things will see on the street, on the sheet, is because this is the hot item right now in the insurance world. Excuse me. This is property. Right now, property, I don't care if you're in California, I don't care if you're in Florida, you know. You guys are, you guys hear the news, you talk about all these nationwide carriers pulling out of states because of property losses. Cyber liability is right behind on on some of their other clients coming through. The next page is your business auto. And I, and I just give you guys the highlights here. You got, you got a million dollars worth of bodily injury, property damage with the auto. Because you guys' auto out of your entire portfolio of, it's funny because it's less than ten percent. And uh, you've got the twenty, twenty nineteen Peterbilt garbage truck is half of your break-in, thirty-one hundred dollars. Physical damage on that garbage truck. You're out the first thousand. All class, repair or replace. Everybody would love to have this captured. Repair or replace, we don't care, it's the first dollar. So that is one thing that, uh, on full cover vehicles. Airport van, no. But here. Twenty nineteen Peterbilt, twenty seventeen Freightliner, the Subaru combo Sterling vehicle, and the twenty-one Ford F two fifty. Are all your full coverage. Everything else is liability. Another thing that lands underneath autos, I I know, I I joke about this, is our street sweeper. Um, that, that sweep mobile. If it's running up and down the road, it is, it is, it is not licensed for road use, right? You don't have to go up and get a license. But if it runs over somebody, that's where we're gonna grab the liability to, for other people. Physical damage is the boat insurance, the very next page. And that is your, and the marine. The yacht keeps, we depreciate it down. We're only at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of physical damage. Two items um, for full coverage is my other thing that I save that. We have a thousand dollar deductible here. Not worried about this. They're not worried about this. This is all right. They're willing to, you can damage some stuff all you want, and apparently the thousand dollar deductible, fine. Big ticket items here is that, that street sweeper. Um, and 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 Ed and I go through this amount, we try to keep these amounts close to what they are because that's how they're gonna pay us. They're not gonna come out and write you a check for a brand new street sweeper. Be awesome if they did. They're not going to. So we try to get a a a value that's, that's as close as we can. It's a lot like your, your farmers and their tractors and their combines. As they're depreciated out, like I said on the bank, they kinda keep track of all that stuff. The one thing that we do have listed, though, is our statue down at the library, as you can kinda see, it's still thirty-six dollars for our fine arts. In case someone vandalizes that, bad boy steals it, good luck, hits it with a tow truck, whatever, I don't know. Different types of things, we have coverage for that. Uh, it's probably, it's probably, it's probably underinsured. It's probably worth more than that now, so.
We looked it up just recently.
All right, well, I had an appreciative value. And and then there is some for our computer system and some other coverage here too, related to that. The la- the next one is, it's not football season yet, but I know someone are getting into it, linebackers. It's not that, this is, these are still the same bad jokes. Uh, linebacker is for you folks right here. Um, people back here say they're not doing their job right, they report you to the state, right? There, there is a situation that can happen like that. This is defense costs or judgments uh, against you if you're found liable. Um, I've run into this before. Um, do this long enough, I think you run into everything. That's my best learning, is how, when, you know, what hits the fan, how these things pay. Um, actually, it was on someone who wasn't even still on the work, okay? They, they, they got to burn it off, right? They got, they, they turned out, they said the heck of it, I'm not doing it again. And and it got brought up against them, and the state came in. It was uh, you know, several thousands in legal fees related to that. If you wanna see something right here, you have a claims made policy, so we have prior coverage all the way back to eighty-seven. EMC has actually insured this risk since nineteen eighty-four, okay? So basically, all prior acts are covered here also. So you, so so let's, let's go back to a prior member, and something gets brought up back then. I don't know what statutes of limitations would be, but even though, we're gonna take care of the legal defense, you're out the first twenty-five hundred bucks. Which is what Tana charges an hour anyway. So I mean, after, after hour one, you're right into that, you're right into that other amount of what we're actually gonna be paying on. That is a, that's a million dollar pool, right, for every time that the policy renews um, from that standpoint. Why I think it's ironic that it's six-two of eighty-seven is that mine didn't have this coverage for three years back in the eighties, so nobody ever sued you guys, right? The other start, the other part that this reaches out is it grabs the committees that are underneath here too. So someone goes after the economic development committee, someone goes after the planning committee, someone goes after the health board. These are extensions of the City of Grant, and they're all insured underneath here. Okay? You don't even have to play football, you're covered. The next step is umbrella. There's four million dollar bird currents. This thing went up uh, dramatically. Um, why do you think that is? There apparently has been some claims as a history, not from us. Not gonna look, not from us. But we have four million dollars here, and this is the reason why I always ask this question, it's a bad one, but. Why is it four million? That's an odd amount, Jeff, that we go with four million. And and the hint is, underneath your general liability, we have a one million dollar, two million dollar pool, any, any one occurrence, they grab a million. Your underlying auto policy, there's a million dollars, right, for bodily injury or property damage. And then underneath your linebacker, the first down of ten, you've got a million dollars here too. And then why would we have the umbrella that would go over and above for another four million dollars? Anyone? Anyone? The Nebraska Tort Act, you don't give a point, just. Nebraska Tort Act has, has, has a five million dollar. For political subdivisions, for political things, you're supposed to have a five million dollar maximum tort in the state of Nebraska. Does that mean that they will sue for more? They will sue for more. Are they supposed to get more? They're not. So you're filling your financial obligation of any one occurrence, payable underneath here for up to five million dollars. But once they hit that amount, then you're done the rest of that term for the umbrella. So let's say, we do something really bad, general liability, we're found negligent, and they get five million dollars. They're gonna grab the one million dollar for their occurrence under, underlying coverage, and then come back here and grab the four million dollar umbrella. We still got another million here. We may get through June second to June second, right? Which is an odd date, but I, June second, June second. And then the autos, June second, we still got a million there, but the umbrella's gone. You will be able to purchase other coverage at that time. I would love to be the agent who's in on that negotiation, because that will not be cheap, and nor the will renewal time. Because they're gonna come in with risk management and make sure, because here's what, okay, here's a great time to talk about this. Risk transfers. That's what we're doing here, folks. You're writing a check to EMC to take the City of Grant's risk that you accept and transfer them to EMC to cover. So although Tana is our legal representative here. When things happen or something like that, they may hire other legal accounts. Now, they, they will work with her too, but they may hire someone who specializes in that field. Uh, whether it's employment practices maybe, which is included in here. Maybe it's something related to that. Just something that, but they, they do work with, a lot of times with the city's attorney or the village's attorney, which I've found. I- in in that working, but there may be someone else, because you're writing a check to transfer that risk, EMC's checkbook now is the one taking over that risk. Does that make sense? It's not risk sharing. It's not us in another city and another village, that all of us sharing the same risk. So if this person over here has a claim, we don't get drugged into their stuff. We are risk transferring. We're transferring that risk, City of Grant, to EMC. The next page is workers' compensation. Here's a fun fact. In two thousand and fourteen, the city's workers' compensation premium was over seventeen thousand dollars. Do you think payroll was higher or lower then? Probably lower, right? What do you base premiums on in workers' compensation? It's based on payroll. And then what exactly we do, right? Garage, garage. Is it, it's, garbage has its own code, right? And we, when we go through, we do the audits. When Candy and her do the audits, they put that much payroll underneath there. Because the City of Grant has had very few claims lately and not severe. That's how, that's how workers' compensation is. Here's your, here's your base rate, okay? If you, if you're good and we don't have claims, the rate goes down with workers' compensation. You may have a lot more payroll, but you may actually pay less. If you have a lot of claims, frequent or severe, it throws the thing off and it's gonna go up, and they're gonna charge you extra. So in two thousand and fourteen, our actual premium, you have a fun fact, the workers' comp premium was higher than the property in two thousand and fourteen. So think how that switched. At one time, I remember when we, we took over the count. We were right in the middle of a quarter million dollar workers' comp claim, when we, when we came over and was the agent on the account. And since, I mean, I remember being like twenty thousand bucks. I remember us going, holy crap, what are we gonna do? And now it's just totally, I mean, but our valuations on our stuff is a lot higher than that, right? This building was not at one point seven million. It was not. The next page, it, our liability for our airport is on a separate program. And we made a change at the hometown agencies last year. We went with a local gentleman. Uh, uh, a large brokerage had bought an out Nation Air. I know on the, on your thing over here says Nation Air, that's a typo. Candy's ninety-nine point nine percent go with that, that's the one that she did, we did mess up there. Uh, uh, the, so so we went with a, a, a local broker, John Burling is, is, is from uh, Vanango originally. He runs an aviation insurance outfits, uh, he's a partner in. And I actually reached out to him, because that's who I worked with way before Nation Air got bought out by Gallagher. And uh, and actually, that's the good news of the contract, was that, but we have five million dollars, so that's a separate policy. We have another five million dollars worth of liability coverage out there. The, the cool coverage here, though, is hanger keepers. So when you guys take your automobile down to uh, any, any garage that you go to, they have a thing called garage keepers insurance. So if you leave it in their care, custody, and control, you're be it. No different than when the docs fly in on their plane and they leave it in our care, custody, and control. And somewhere from the airport authority or Ed's out there, or somebody's out there, hopefully Brian's the one doing it. But yeah, we didn't move the thing around and we damaged the plane. It's left in our care, custody, control. That's where our hangers keepers liability comes in. No different than they put your car up on the hoist. The hoist malfunctions and drops your, your truck down and it does damage to it. That's garage keepers at, at, at a, at an auto body shop or an auto service center. We have hangers keepers for damage to other people's stuff. Does that make sense?
That and Jeff aren't moving planes, I'd say. We're calling people that know how to move planes at airports.
It's, it's not free move plane day. It's not, I don't encourage that to be, be, be a whole.
Calling Mr. Fleming.
We, yeah, yeah, get him in charge. If there's a med pay claim out there, or something like that, somebody trips and falls, that it lands on a air. Okay, that, that was a cool situation. We've had that typically. Um, the structures that are out there, though. And their price tag is on your property section. Okay, does that make sense? We transfer that liability risk here. Here's why. EMC doesn't wanna get in the airplane business. I think at one time, everything was, well, I can't even say that. It was written differently back in the day. And and to be honest with you, the City of Grant was an additional name insured on another policy. Here's the problem about that. You guys have no control over that as additional name insured. If that person doesn't pay their premium, or that person goes out of business, or that person just says the heck of it skips down. Or that person only has a million dollars worth of liability, you guys were listed as additional name insured. Um, we did, we changed that years ago. That was a big thing. And we got, we got these guys in, involved in it, and this is why we have the. City of Grant and Grant Municipal Airport are together on that. The FBI out there has his own policy, and you guys know that. And uh, aviation insurance did one of these numbers a couple of years ago, now it's coming back now, or at least that was what we found here. Whew. So the next page is this one. This is my favorite. Uh, I'm a numbers guy, that's why there's scribble marks all over it, and mine doesn't look nearly as professional as yours, guys. And this really is, because I, I made a change even today on this, and I did not catch Nation Air until after I printed it. And I'd already filled two rainforests, so I just rolled with it. Uh, the property went up thirteen percent. Your general liability went up five point nine. I'm a percentage, guys, I can give you exact numbers if you want. Cyber went up twenty-two percent. And you didn't have any claims. And the marine went down two point five. Commercial auto went up six point nine. How many people in this room would like their auto to only go up six point nine? Hmm, yeah. Uh, the football insurance went eleven percent. Umbrella, eighteen point nine. Workers' compensation is down eight and a half, eight point four. Overall, our EMC increase was eight point five percent. It was six thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. But Jeff, you just went gloom and doom. I did, because you guys took on more risk, a lot more risk. And still, we had a six percent increase. Eight was an eight, what do I say? Oh, well, that's, I shit, I jumped ahead. With our aviation insurance going down twenty-five and a half percent, our grand total of increase was fifty-two sixty-six, or a six percent increase, six point four. Let's talk about the fact that EMC is a mutual carrier. So what does that mean? You folks all are part owners of an, of an insurance company. Do you feel like it? Do you feel like it right now? Not so much. What happens is they take all of the Muni business and put it together in the state of Nebraska. And they go over three-year average, and if that's profitable, we get a dividend, which we normally have by now. Uh, we haven't gotten that dividend yet, but they are going to pay a dividend of two point three percent. To give you an idea, how big is that dollar amount? That's probably gonna be about fifteen hundred bucks. Not a huge deal. But twenty-one of the last twenty-seven years, EMC has paid a dividend. The last seven years, City of Grant's collected forty-five thousand dollars in dividends. Which means roughly, you have earned six uh, thousand four hundred dollars on average. Last two years have been down. What's happened in the state of Nebraska the last couple of years? There's been substantial amounts of claims. Um, and still, this has been profitable. Why it was profitable was because there was about three-year run there where they made, they paid you twenty-seven percent dividends. Uh, we made, we had a, we had an eighty-two hundred dollar dividend, we had a ninety. Uh, we made, we had a, we had an eighty-two hundred dollar dividend, we had a ninety-eight hundred dollar dividend, we had twelve thousand seven hundred dollar dividend. Now, our premium went up each of those years, I'd like to point that out, but they were offset with some of those dividends. We have not seen that the last two years, neither has anybody else in the industry. There's not a lot of players in this field. Uh, the reason why is, uh, the amount of losses are offsetting profitability for insurance companies. Now, I never say feel sorry for an insurance company, because they have a really nice building here and there, and the other places they probably aren't doing on. But, it is getting to the point where it's going to get, you see, uh, uh, there's other carriers that are pulling out of Nebraska. That do, you can probably put this, they get together normally on Sundays and things like that, and there's like two or three million dollars worth of property on, on, on a corner block, kinda like this. And they have claims that are eighty thousand dollars. That's getting fewer and fewer far between, and that's what you're seeing more and more here. If you would like, one of the things that we can do is look into reducing your hail, wind and hail risk. Here's the problem. Where it's on a per-location basis, it's, uh, tougher to write those policies for wind and hail, and because you guys are sprung out of nine different locations. If it was just like that corner block I was talking about, where you got about three million dollars worth of coverage, we can usually buy down the deductible and the wind and hail deductible, and I can take a look at that. I don't think we wanna do it over all nine of our properties, to be quite honest with you. But one of the things that we might look at is like this building, uh, maybe the ones right there on Main Street, to be quite honest with you. I would think that that might be something you wanna look at. We looked at it last year and no one was interested in, in writing that, because we had a ten thousand dollar one, we looked at reducing it down to five. And after I said, well, there's thirty buildings, they looked at it and said, yeah, not interested. So, um...
And when Jeff and I were going over vehicles and everything else, that's kinda what he mentioned to me, and I said, well, it's worth mentioning, but they didn't buy it last year and things only got worse from last year, so I doubt that.
Yeah, they didn't.
Then we can.
We couldn't get a cover, we couldn't cover the offer last year, so, um... It's not good, it's not fun right now in the insurance world. I, I mean, I enjoy my job, um, and, and stuff like that, and, and this is, this is one of those puzzles that's making it tougher and tougher to finish it out. EMC's a great carrier, I could go on about that. Um, I think you've seen that, otherwise it's the village, or the village, the city of grant would not have been with it for the last, just like A four. That was nine, so, not nine anymore. So, they have, they have a good history, they've taken care of the city, the city has partnered, partners, I don't know, shut up. Partnered with the city of grant all this time, we accepted that risk, and you transferred it during that time. And I, and this is, this is the best one.
And then, and I'm touching on the cybersecurity, as you guys are well aware, that's something we've sort of highlighted as well here in the office, and upped our game on, on... By, by bringing on twenty twenty technologies and the computer stuff, and the firewall and all that type of stuff, so it's, it's pretty relevant in the back of our minds. There have been some smaller communities that water utilities were held for ransom, so, and it's, it's not unfounded.
Not to bang on this point anymore, but at the property section, one of the things that's interesting is when you run even our analysis here on this particular risk. We keep talking about how we've been fairly profitable the last couple of years, uh, we have, our loss history on property over the last five years is seventy-four point four percent. We've made out a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on, on, on property losses over that time. Had a lightning hit some stuff, we had, had some other things, we had, um... We redid the golf course. Looks gorgeous, but it's all new out there, so, I mean, that type of standpoint, so, a couple of times, and then there was some other losses related to property. Questions, concerns? Great, I am just the, the happiest guy in the world right now to talk to, uh, bring a lot of joy to people's lives, um...
It's actually better than when Jeff and I originally talked, uh, months ago, when we were talking about eleven percent overall increase, so... It's, it's better news than, than we had originally thought, so...
And, and if you figure, okay, so let's say that we have a loss, and we're out of ten thousand dollars at one location, okay, let's just find that scenario. Then your increase then would have been fourteen thousand, so you would have been right around that fifteen percent that we were thinking. So by then, now, how many losses have we had? Would be my next question. How many losses have we had, Jeff, in the last ten years where it's affecting more than one property? You have an answer? We've not had the sweeping hail that's been bad enough, just, you know, it's been one location here, it's been one spot here, it's been one spot there. I did say that, didn't I? Sorry.
That's like the third time you've said sweeping hail tonight.
Put that back into your mouth, please.
Because the, the state is...
I'm all about stats, that's what, the other stats was the one to talk about, because that's the other thing that I ran, because that's one of the questions that I had. I said, I'm looking at the, the risk analysis and the whole thing. The last ten years, next ten days, may happen, but...
We've done, we've done very well, especially on the workman comp side, that.
The things we can control, we've controlled.
Things we can control, we've controlled.
Another fun fact, at one time, we had a deductible on our liability, property damage liability, I can remember those days. Because we had about three liability claims in a matter of time, and they said, hey, we're gonna transfer the rest to you. Right now, we have zero dollar deductible on our property damage. Is that one thing, at that time, I still remember that being a hot topic. There's twenty-five hundred dollars, everybody, we were losing our minds, well, what are, what are you doing with that? Well, we had a ranch flat over there, smacking, smacking, uh, we had two things laid, laid in plumbing, we had a tree branch flat smacked into a car for about five K, I'm talking about. We had three claims, like about ninety claims, we don't have a goal. So, those things happen, and these, these two hopefully will pass. Do I ever think? Do I ever, that's, do I ever think that we're gonna be back to the days of a thousand dollar deductible, twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, or even five thousand dollars on wind and hail? The loan officers in the room, we are going to be at a five thousand dollar wind and hail deductible on homes here shortly, and that's gonna be the minimum that you're going to see. The other thing that companies are doing is they're putting percentages on a business, on, on a building. So one point three million dollar building, one percent wind and hail deductible, if you have this building right here, that's the next step they're doing. Thirty-five miles by that, what's, how far is, oh, like thirty-six miles that way. That is that, if you walked into that town and went down, went down Main Street, like commercial businesses, that is what they're all dealing with, they're one, two percent deductibles wind and hail. So if you're value your building, let's say, come to that agency, though. I think sure that's seven hundred thousand, if I want replacement costs. No. And, and that's just not going to happen, and, and, and that, because if something happened, and they want me to put a one, two percent deductible on that, no, I'm not gonna do it, I would rather... Allocate dollars elsewhere and use them when we claim that. And if it burns down, am I gonna rebuild? I'm not gonna go back and choice a mason. You're not gonna go back with this building. You're not. Although, fun fact, um, what else got here? That's one, that's one past line, Tyler, right? That's what happens when sometimes, like historical markers and some of those type of situations happen. If you have a building that's like that, you may be obligated to replace the building that way. And then if you get into that, and you have a blanket coverage, you have up to your blanket to take care of that. That's happened too. That was, that was a claim that EMC gave you, about the blanket example, because they were on the other side of about twenty-five hundred.
We see a historical marker on all of those. We see a historical marker on all of them.
Hang it down, we don't want them on any of them.
Well, it, it's not, it's not, it's just an obligation if you wanna keep that historical marker. If you were to replace this building, this is an historical building. If you were to replace this building, let's say, with a steel frame building, you would just lose the historical mark of that. It sucks. I mean, it's kinda cool.
It is a cool.
How much do you wanna pay for the historical marker is the other question.
Does it suck one point three million?
As, without going, without saying, we appreciate city's business, uh, keeping it local, um... We hope that we've earned your trust from that standpoint, um, we've got an amazing staff, they work with us, we do a great, I, we have a good, uh, firm relationship from that standpoint. Claims happen, something happens, they're, they're always asking, what, what's, what's the city situation for this? Do I need to do this for a special event? Those types of things, and, and good time for me to work on those things, that's, 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 that's a key thing. Audits come about, I think we're extremely helpful from that standpoint. We do a lot of education. This is, this is the Cliff Notes version. When I had Ed down, I was pounding big time about what, where this thing is headed, and what they can do on their end, because, because it, it is, it's tough right now. We will do the best that we can for you guys, and that, that, we, and we, we appreciate partnering with the city of, of Grant.
You got the thirty-minute version, I actually had the three-hour version.
Is there anything else you need from me? I just need kind of an okay, that, hey, Jeff, that's what we wanna do, renewal is this next month. That's, and, and assuming that's okay. I will move that one unless I hear a different one. You don't want me to stick around any of them.
Do you have any questions for? Nope, it's clear.
Clear, uh, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you, guys. Thanks, Paul.
Hey, Cole.
Oh, that was exciting.
Fun.
Hey, when I told Jesse two weeks ago it was gonna be eleven percent, I think we were both kinda scared, so... That was actually better news, and he did say he was gonna send it back to EMC and tell them to work harder, so... And, uh, they, Jeff's been fantastic, yeah, I spent three hours over a couple of meetings with him, but, and I know Jesse spends quite a bit of time with Candy on the audit side, so... But they are very easy to work with, and they explain everything, uh, and they're very good at making sure that we're not negligent. So we constantly, you know, hey, we have a sewer backup, you know, hey, when's the last time you had it cleaned? Nope, you're not negligent. So, they've, they've been very good on that aspect, and that's just one example. I know the golf course, like you said, has been kind of a big hit lately for us, at least in the five years that I've been here, but we have been working on the other areas, the areas, like you said, that we can control.
Right.
Bringing things to actual value versus replacement cost, or, you know, that type of stuff, so...
And they're good about reading the minutes, or they see us driving something and go, oh, wait, did you get that insured, or, um, you know, they're, they're very observant and stuff.
Do you make a motion, or?
Uh, yeah, to, to accept the presentation from Jeff's speech and report the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Do we want to keep our shirts, or not? Is the question.
Yes, that is the question, so...
Action and discussion on, action and discussion on presentation.
Lots of discussing, lots of actions.
Ed had a transpose, and there was a copying phase. In all fairness, I try and keep things worded the same year after year, so...
Tana, do you have any questions, any concerns?
No, not really, I mean, it's just, I don't know if there's other options out there just to price check, but the problem with Muni's whole buildings is something like, like Westwood, it's kinda that same kind of structure, and there's only... Like two or three companies that would even insure this type of facility, so...
And, and we did a price check, what year was that?
Nineteen, was when I, it was the first year it was here?
Yeah, it sounds like it was the first year, probably.
And it's very similar to like AMC, you know, like Paul said, we, there's just, there were a lot of players in the game, but now there's not very many players in the game.
And they don't wanna look at you unless you really have to make a change, I think.
Oh, I have quite a few of them, I will flat out tell you, we're not particularly new. And I'm just speaking in generalities, not, not current knowledge, just in general, but...
They're sculptor, they're sweeping swords.
Yeah, that's what.
But, I mean, there's not, there's not really a lot to do, because a lot of companies have gone to the percentage of, for any sort of wind and hail, so...
So that's certainly a local agency?
No.
I think at some point we have to like, and it doesn't have to be this year, but I would say that at some point we probably should just continue to have like a rolling price check to make sure we're still, you know what I mean?
Like we do other stuff.
Yeah. You know, I know, I know we, I know we're, we're...
More time to take action?
But, but this is happening to second.
Right, so like, I, I feel like we don't have time to do that this year.
Yeah, I agree.
But I think it needs to be on our calendar well in advance of this timeframe next year. I've just going out to bid, just to see, I mean...
Yeah, Jeff can only, I mean, that's, it takes up to this meeting to get that, to get the numbers done.
Right, right, so what we're saying, like, for next year?
We won't have the numbers from Jeff then, for next year?
Well, we, when we did the bid, they were able to get something together.
It would be the same estimate that anybody else would put together, based on what's happened.
Oh, I see, I got, I got you.
Every, everybody's gonna have to say, this is roughly where we're going to be, and you guys need to make a decision to...
I think every, every five, six years, it's gonna be to say, I mean, I, I don't think we should do it this year, because we're knocking on the door on, on June second. But I don't think it's unreasonable to have that be a plan moving forward.
Like every, I think we don't...
It'll be, this is our fifth year.
Yeah, don't, most things don't need to be every five years.
Well, it, no, I mean, everyone does it differently, I mean, it just depends on like, each community picks for that. I mean, it may be like the insurance they do every five years, uh, sorry, uh, auditors they do every five years.
That's where I got.
Certain things they do every ten years, three years, it just, it's not, there's no consistency in that.
Some don't ever allow, I mean, it's just, it's all preference of the board and stuff like that.
Longevity, working with the same company, similar to how...
I don't think anyone could beat Jeff.
With TC Engineering, we are...
We're probably being fat, so it's still good. Right?
Talks are good, talks are good. I do think he, I mean...
I think it's a great job, but I think, I don't, I'm not really, yeah.
If you can be local, it's helpful for things like noticing new equipment or whatever. I think as he's presenting this and we're talking about trends, I, I think it makes sense that we start to think about this cost when we think about... Building things, repairing things, buying new things, um, because it's all that cost behind the cost that... I feel like a lot of times we're just talking about what is the cost to do this. But, kind of some other discussions we've had, like we can get grants, we can get a lot of money to do things, but what is it going to cost us to maintain those things?
Right, what's the real cost?
Yeah.
The actual.
Yeah, that's a sc- scary trend. It's terrible, I just want to throw this away.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so can we, um, can we go out to bid next year then, in March? I think we, I'll look back, we can look back when we did it, because I wanted to say maybe we started to kind of crop stuff in February, even. February, then, okay. So, but we...
And can we confirm it was nineteen, I guess, yeah?
Yeah, I'll double check, I, I think it was, I, I, yeah, I think it was.
And what were our outcomes, I can't, I can't even remember what our outcomes were at that point, I know it was either so close it didn't make sense to change, or he was, I thought, I don't remember.
I don't remember honestly either, I'd have to go back and look at the notes.
I mean, if we have it, it may not, it may help us to determine whether it makes sense to even go out to bid. Five years, knowing what's happening in the industry, and what our results for five years ago might help us to decide to, if we have to go out to bid.
Okay. Put it on your calendar, twenty twenty-five. To-do list already.
Twenty twenty-five.
I, I will go ahead and make a motion to accept the hometown agency twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five insurance.
A second.
Plan package.
Offering.
Offer, great. The bill, big bill.
Kimberly moved Andrea second that we accept the offering from hometown agency for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five insurance, any more discussion? Sam, how do you go?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, guys, good, good questions, good, um, things to keep in the back online when we have a new project or anything new. All right. Action and discussion on resolution twenty-four oh five oh three to adopt the city of Grant's single personal manual. And we impill all resolution or parts of that were in conflict.
Uh, so this is, uh, obviously it's kind of a niche with the swimming pool. They need specific guidelines for the personnel over there, and while we did all the work on the employee personnel manual. I had Tom double check, but I did all the merging.
There's no conflicts.
Merging together, and obviously just, we, we, we didn't really have anything in place prior to this. Um, so we need something in place, since we have something for the regular, for the city employees. Um, where this is a seasonal type employment for them. Um, felt like they really needed something specific to that job in that area. Um, and then obviously the time clock and all of that language being included in there and sent it over to Pana. So she could look at it, draft the resolution and make sure they didn't crop, crop some areas that were transposed like a, like an action and discussion and an action and discussion.
I just, I just, I just got it, I was reading it.
You caught it, you did good.
I caught something else.
I think we got to vote like twice.
Oh, you got, yeah, part you should.
Well, and that department has some specialty items because, um, swimming pools qualify for some different regulations and stuff for labor. So those kind of addresses all of that.
Fifteen, fifteen year olds and that type of stuff.
And then they're considered amusement parks, so they get some different, we call some difficult.
And I've worked with Brittany on the job descriptions and the, the duties and all of that to try and make this inclusive so that they can use this going forward. Since we'll be with this pool for the next sixty plus years. Tom, did I do okay?
On page five, number seven, alcohol use, just add, just, it's drugs, that's something I saw in the whole thing, good job though, to, to set dogs.
Page five, number seven, okay.
Oh, no dogs.
Okay. That's what the kids are calling them now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what the kids are calling them.
Well, you know, once you break forty-five, you don't, don't use this anymore.
Thank you.
So, I mean, dogs, that was good, I, I wasn't sure there's any, I didn't know this was the first one, so. That was my next question, was like, what changes do you make in the biggest version?
No, this is.
This is the, this is the.
This is the version.
We, we had a version, but it was reminiscent of what Renee Marquardt days, so that would be since then.
Oh, uh, Renee Styler.
Renee Styler, sorry.
It hasn't been used, I mean, they've used it, but it was not formally addressed and stuff, and we added then.
So this is the first real adaptation of a personnel manual for swimming pool, I'm always correct.
Um, page seven, number one.
Yes.
Should we just make that thirty minutes prior to, so that if pool hours change, we're not stuck with a time? It says reports work by twelve thirty PM local time. If we change pool hours, does that?
Yeah, I just went with the current schedule, that's a good catch too, I think it should just be thirty minutes prior to your scheduled shift hour.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was going off of our one o'clock.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about probably not going back. Um, public and private swimming lessons, does this?
Uh, what would be?
Sorry, uh, fifteen.
Okay.
Does this mess up our matrix at all with regard to pay if they, okay, so we all fit within there?
And this is what, it, this is again a formal adaptation of what we've already been practicing.
Okay. Um.
If that makes sense, uh, we, we've already been offering fifty cents and a dollar extra on top of, this is just putting it in writing.
How is that determined? Cause that's like the number one complaint that I have heard from employees of the pool.
How is that?
Is how, like how are we, just, cause before this policy was in place.
There was nothing.
They were getting paid the money to do the lessons.
They, that was the, um, we have to pay them for them to have the.
Insurance.
Insurance.
Okay.
And so a lot of pools otherwise then were doing something different, I mean, that like they had to pay a fee or something like that. But this is the way that insurance company, uh, prefers that we did it. I just pay them, and that's just the amount that they chose at that time was the dollar an hour.
Okay.
And the public swimming lessons were, they weren't getting anything prior to two years, or the opening of the new pool.
Cause the public swimming lessons were just expected to be part of their position, you know?
So I think that's, I mean, that's like the question, so public swimming, those are advertised, that's part of the city. Private lessons, there's two things that can happen, so if somebody calls the city and says, I want my kid to have lessons, they're put on the log, right? And then we find a lifeguard that has the time and can do it. You also have lifeguards proactively renewing lessons with previous years. Which feels like a little bit of a different situation, um, especially in comparison to the fact that like there is a private citizen giving lessons at the pool. Just paying the cost of their membership and then getting paid to do those lessons, so. Where are we at, I guess, with this, and then if, if an employee wanted to just come in and say, I'm not working today, I'm gonna give a lesson. I'm not in my lifeguard uniform, I called this person, they wanna have lessons with me, I'm just curious, like, how are we covered?
If they do it during open swim, our lifeguards are on duty, we have no responsibility from that individual. So anybody can go in, I mean, you're teaching your kid potentially how to swim when you're there, I mean, that's what the pool's there for. So there is no, but they can't come in and do it during closed private hours type of thing, it's.
Right, so if they were not, if they were not working and they were proactively scheduling their own.
During open swim, when everybody's there, that's their choice.
They would not be, they would not be paid hourly, they would not be insured.
Right.
That they could do that, so, okay. I didn't see anything in the handbook about that, and I didn't know, is that a concern if that starts happening?
No.
Okay.
So it's more of the whole issue is just when they're there during our private time of doing that. And private swimming lessons, that's what it was thought of, is most of the time people are wanting the pool more of a private setting than, rather than having it a whole pool.
And I, I think that, at least since we've opened the new pool, they've, they've tried to let that be more of a family approach. So if the family is more comfortable with one lifeguard than another.
Yeah.
They try and schedule with that lifeguard. Um. And. It's worked out, I think you get more of a, I mean, if the family wants a specific lifeguard for private swim lessons, then I, I, I would appreciate that. I mean, I think that's the better route than just everyone signing up and then you just get whoever's in the rotation. Cause some of them can't do private swim lessons the first year, or, you know, the first year of employment, they can't do private swim lessons.
How does Brittany handle then if they, if they are just there giving a lesson and they opt to not clock in?
Then it goes to the skip, or.
Cause if they're not on the schedule and they're in public swim hours.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're not on the clock.
Do we get anything in here about that?
They're not on the clock, no.
Okay, there won't be any concern about you're an employee and you're here, but you're not clocked in.
They're not, they're, they're not on the clock and they're just.
They, they would pay their normal admission to get in.
I think some have, I, I think some have been doing it, I don't really know, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any legal issues or. So that, that is the, the, the defining difference then, if you are clocked in, this kicks in and you're insured protected by the city and have access to the pool.
And have access to.
If you are not clocked in, you can do it anytime you want, you take all the money for the lessons, but if anything happens, you're not.
Yeah, as long as you do it in a public swimming.
Yeah, okay.
They just know that, well, yeah, I mean, this is a perfect example, you know, it's very open, so when we may have two or three kids up there, you may not be able to successfully give a private lesson. There's a balance between the employee and the.
So my second concern is in with like, uh, lap swim hour, because that becomes a really prime opportunity for people to give private lessons. But it's also been, it's lap swim designated by the city, so that.
And it's always been that you had swimming lessons during the lap swim, so.
Doesn't always work out great for the lap swimmers, so.
We've, we, we have worked on that, I mean, there's been some, some, some pushback on that, I mean, there's been some definite clashing of everybody on that. But that is a prime, prime, the early morning in bedtime on the prime time, it's the prime time, on the clock, private swim lessons.
Well, it's, it's prime time for off the clock as well, for private citizens, is what I'm saying, it's becoming prime time.
Well, as I recall, it pretty grossed out for the lap swimmers.
Yeah, definitely, not so much.
As long as you put up a lot of lanes, it must go pretty bad.
We don't, we're, there's no roads for lanes during laps.
There shouldn't be lanes.
There's, there's float, they can put up, cause that's what I asked for when I went, cause I went to lap swim, I could get it set up ahead, so. But that wasn't, that wasn't, that's another, that's some address, that's something to say, laps, if you're going to place another lane down, or you actually have to ask for a lane.
No, there should be lanes on for laps.
There's the, there's the, um, slide barrier, right, obviously the big slides, you can't get, can't go in there. But of the three lanes, the only thing that's going to end down is the line on the bottom of the pool.
That would be fixed.
And that's, the old pool, we just had left the first two, like by the slide, that was kind of the, uh, swim lines. And then, um, water aerobics, and it took the other spots, and then we just worked together with whoever had the swim lessons. Usually the water aerobics people weren't blocking like the first part, you know, using the whole pool, so they could still use part of the deep end or. They don't have water aerobics in the pool.
Oh, we did.
It's really a big difference.
Very much.
Is that gonna be delineated in this manual that perhaps from lap two, lap eight, or is that just?
No, no, the.
Is it placed in a little something later, on page eighteen, place removed in leg, leg ropes, very bottom.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, it's eighteen in the morning, sure, they put the lanes out for that, so. No, that's just a conversation we'll have with Brittany.
And a lot of times I feel like it's more if we're are having an issue with something that has kind of now been kind of a nail for, yeah.
So I definitely, again, if nobody's showing up for lap swim, and you have like all those links in and out, that's kind of a pain, a pain we did, but.
Well, so, cause I, so that was one thing, so I, 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 that's the reason why I got memberships, because I went to lap swim in summer. And so when I came, I, this one time I couldn't, so I talked to Ed about it, and the next time, basically, I might not show up every single time. But it was lap, it was designated lap swim, and so if I showed up and I wanted lap swim, I checked in, I want a lap swim, and then they would immediately go out, put a lane. So, so I'm okay with that as being associated with maybe, you know, uh, but I guess the, we also need to know that.
Right, and some people won't ask, just because that's the personnel.
No, we'll do, we'll do.
Well, or they don't know to ask, I just.
No, we, we've done it in the past, and I don't know why from last year to this year didn't get carried over, cause I told them there was a minimum of three lanes every class.
What may need needs to be in here?
It might, it's not, it's more of a vanity here.
Well, it might actually need to be in here, and maybe it can be dependent on how many people are lap swimming, but there's at least one. Because I, I, I'm very familiar with in-laws in California that might really arrive because there was not designated lanes. And people were severely, so I don't, like legally, if you're gonna do lap swim. You may need to designate places where people cannot be jumping and lanes for hanging at the same time, because.
Your lane swimmer's not looking for people to come in.
No.
For a lot of.
Right. Yep, what, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's going to be a part of the regular duty, we put other stuff in here about the regular duties. Um, like checking on or pool cleaning. I just put another section in that part.
But it's not that we have, sometimes we move the lanes and stuff, so I don't think we want it that detailed probably. Do you know what I mean on that too? Like, maybe they don't have water aerobics, so we're shifting it to these two lanes that day so that they can still use the.
Well, you can consider. I don't think it needs to be that associated, um, it just needs to probably say that, you know, during lap swim, but lanes need to be designated for lap swim. That there's, you know, if people are doing rock, water aerobics and they need to know where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, but you can't use the slide inside of the pool, if it's gonna go into the, to the lane, it's the lap swim lane.
Yeah.
Right, cause there's a little small little one during that timeframe.
It's done.
Which also happens.
It's done. Brittany just said, consider it done.
Okay, I, it's, but I, I do think we do need it in here just for.
Yeah, there'd be a minimum of three lanes for lap swim, that's the sentence on that.
Okay, perfect.
Well. I mean, I think there should be some flexibilities, if you don't have six lap swimmers and you've got water aerobics that's now scrunched in. But I just, I just think we should, we should, to your point, keep it open enough to where it says like four lap swim, there will be a minimum of one lane. Uh, up to three as needed, maybe makes more sense? Cause it is a pool for everyone, I don't, I don't want lessons not be able to happen, but I.
But that's gorgeous, Sam, can we put it some way like that it's more like the line, the designated areas will be, um. Designated for the day or something, or for that time period or, um, cause like.
So one out to three?
So we're water aerobics too, it's not like we need to have it though.
Well, and it's a, it's a lessons time, so like, bottom line is you don't wanna, I don't think, you don't wanna mark off three lanes if there are zero people lap swimming. And then your lessons are not able to do what they need to do, or your water aerobics are not able to do what they need to do. But I just think it needs to be a decision of the operator.
Lap, lap, lap swimmers will have preference during lap swim time.
And lanes will be designated.
Yeah, and lanes will be designated.
Yeah, and you can just say, you can say lap swimmers will have, will have, you know, preference during lap swim time, but you know, during that timeframe, you know, something, you go, yeah, end up to three lanes. And then therefore if you say, um, you know, if there's no lap swimmers, then, then you can, you can take a lane down, but if you show up and you want a lane, you know?
Yeah, like we won one night, five minutes.
Yeah.
We just don't know, yeah.
I don't know now, like, when it was the old pool, we didn't have that many, of course, that came up to swim lap swim, but is it the whole?
So on, so Monday there was.
My jam, but like if you're.
Four kids and me, tonight there was me. So that's what I'm saying, like, I don't, I don't want.
Run the whole time, like the whole, I don't even know how long lap swim.
The hours.
No, no, and that's the thing too, so when I left tonight, if there were three lanes designated and nobody else came in. You could do lessons in lanes, but typically with the lessons, they're younger kids and they're wanting to go this way, and lanes are going this way. Which all in all just mean, it equals a hazard if it's all happening at the same time.
Well, we, we ran into the same thing when they did the private swim lessons with the swim team practice, and they just stay in the shallow.
Of that lane, if they're in a lane, or they just stay in the shallow.
No, they're, they're in a lane, they just stay in the shallow lane for the, for the private swim lessons.
Okay.
So, and that's how we solved that.
I just think they should, yes, I just think they should have flexibility, for the nights where there's five lane swimmers, we should probably have all three up. For the nights where there's one, feel free to take it down to one, I mean, they'll, they'll figure it out, I think, people get into habits and routines and they kind of know what to expect. They don't have to put all three up immediately.
Well, and sometimes then we have swim team in the afternoons, maybe if we have public lessons, so then, you know, sometimes then we broke it up. But lap swim can use these two lanes and then they can use these so many lanes and, you know, we do divide it up more than at that point.
We are gonna get more foot traffic, cause I understand the wall and Imperial are having.
Imperial, they're, they're, they'll, they'll open Monday.
Okay.
Imperial will open?
Yeah.
And if Ogallala, are they opening?
Yeah.
I've heard they've gone.
Yeah.
They were having issues also.
Will they open at all?
I don't know if they're not opening at all, but I think they had closed the indoor pool and didn't open.
Yeah.
The outdoor pool, so there was a lot of Ogallala plates on those couple days.
Got you.
Yeah.
So the, the number of lanes for, for lap swimming shall be dictated by the number of patrons.
It is participating.
Yeah.
Participating, that makes sense. And at the discretion of the pool operators.
There you go, I think that's great, because then you can go, you know, you can go even more than you do.
Right, the number of lanes for lap swimming shall be dictated for the, by the number of patrons at the discretion of the pool operator.
Good discussion. Good discussion.
Do we need to put a maximum per lane? Because I want to be like, discretion of pool, that's like fifteen people do something out there and.
Well, the pool.
I, I think it's one.
Yeah.
I mean, that one, if you're an adult, I don't want another person, yeah, I don't want another person in my lane if I'm swimming and I'm an adult, I want the whole main lane.
In a lane. It'd be ideal, but it ha, I mean, it happens, you kind of got to speed down.
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not. One side will read, but that's.
Go to the next lane, dude.
Got you.
Uh, do we, I didn't see anything in here too about the slides and the swim lanes, that's just, again, hazard and insurance potential issue. I don't think we mentioned that the slides cannot be used if the lane is.
In the swim lane or, or the diving board, I guess, either.
No, yeah, it's, I, I mean, we can, but it's, that's an understanding of common sense for.
Well, sometimes people don't have common sense.
Is there not?
Listen, we have people, we have it drawn out here that you can't have public displays of affection, so I think maybe we should say we can't dive in school swim lane.
Mm-hmm.
What was I saying?
I mean, we.
It happened last year, it happened.
We also said that we all get it.
And the slide is off during.
But that, maybe the next person takes your job and is as smart as you, you know, ten years down the road, and they don't get it, so.
The slide wasn't on.
So swim lessons almost always end with a couple of trips down the slides as a reward.
Yes, yes.
Both, either or.
Yeah.
And so, the big one more so is turned on and usually roped off, but the other one has come on during lap swim, and there's no lanes, so.
Okay.
So yes, we need it in there somewhere.
And then you're swimming like this.
And that was also addressed last year, but, okay.
It's all new staff, you, you guys have new staff every season, so it's just one of those things that needs to be part of training.
We have the same operators.
And that's why we put it in the manual.
Uh, I will find a spot for that, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
So, I don't know about the, the actual, where it's gonna fit best, um.
Under common sense.
It's not where I have, I was trying to say, can we try to have it somewhere else so that it's maybe that.
You should know this, but you don't.
We had to put this in there for someone, there's a reason why.
That's how everything gets put in our packages, I think.
Right?
Because someone, your, that's why your coffee says, that's why your coffee says, then you write it.
And then there's a lawsuit, and then you write it.
Your food's hot. Duh, it shouldn't be right. But, uh, so, so we need to table this for the next meeting.
Yes, I know, that makes sense.
That's good, and thank you, it's just.
It's very, it's very good, very comprehensive. Um, I will make a motion to table action and discussion on resolution twenty-four oh five oh three until the next meeting.
Second.
Kimberly moves, Sam second, that we table resolution twenty-four oh five oh three.
September eleventh.
Good.
Yep, due to June eleventh, any more discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, guys. And then when this, when this is final.
Wait, 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 so, this, I wanted, I'm trying to write, it's what I was saying.
Right, sir.
No slide or diving board while lane lines are in use.
They would, they enter, they, they would, they would enter the lane, yeah, I mean, does, is the big slide always on?
Would enter the lane.
No.
No, no.
But like at the very, at the very end, like when, when the lap swim's like over and there's like five minutes left if somebody wants to.
No, 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 it just comes on in a minute, because you have, you have lessons that are like thirty minutes long, and lap swim is an hour, so you'll have. The big slide turn on halfway through lap swim.
Okay.
For a little bit, couple kids row down it, fly down it, whatever they do.
Okay. But that's already roped off.
That part is roped off, the other slide, which is if, if there's a law, yeah.
It's like the end, that enters the lane.
Exactly, one on the beach that.
Yes, exactly, that should be like, done.
You make sure the lane swimmers are out of the.
You don't get to use it if there's a lane, so, if there's a, if there's a swimmer in that lane, you don't get to use that slide.
Out for that slide. Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to.
Nor the diver, or nor the diving board.
Have someone have a head open, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
Some of those. Yeah.
Because, because we did, I was there with, when they were, because they were giving private lessons during swim team practice, and, yes, the big slide was a reward. Or sometimes they were too scared of the big slide, so they, one of the lifeguards would catch them off the diving board or something like that.
Which totally works, as long as they're just not so.
But, but I, but we squashed the, there's no, during swim team practice, there's no, the big, none of the features are on.
Yeah.
Because it creates a cross.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, yeah, this is me.
I mean, I call it resistance, I call it resistance training, but, uh, others might not call it the same.
It's an extra work, it's an extra workout, resistance training, yeah, yeah.
No, we don't.
Be crying, I mean, I'd be.
It'd be, it'd be kind of cooler if it was head on, that'd be more, but it's sideways, so that's a little. And we can, we can barely make it to the length of the pool anyway, it really becomes a struggle. I don't know.
All right, good discussion, all right. Action and discussion on bills and claims, did everyone have a chance to agree on bills and claims?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Uh, and we'll make a motion to see bills and claims in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Kimberly moves, Sam second, to pay bills and claims amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, any discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are adjourned at eight thirty-four, very good, everyone. I know.
Yeah, I've, on the record, we had, we had some of those. We cannot do anything better for you, so.